Call our meeting to order tonight. Renato, if you could do the roll call, please.
Miller.
Here.
Eddinger.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
McEvers.
Here.
Gookin.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
We rise for the invocation by Pastor Paul Vinoy from Candlelight Church.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Father, thank you for this time that we have together. Thank you for these that serve our community so faithfully every day. It has been a great year, and we look back over this year and we have much to celebrate. And now, as we come to the end of the year and look at Christmas and the celebrations that we have with family and friends, we're thankful. And so, tonight, Lord, as we have this final meeting of the year, we ask that your blessing would be upon our mayor and our council members, every person here and in this great community, Lord, that you would make yourself known to us, that you would allow our eyes to be open and our ears open to you, and our hearts sensitive and tender in your presence. We thank you, Lord. And so, tonight, as any discussion might go forth and the things that might be discussed and decided upon, we ask for your wisdom and your leadership. We thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance, please, Steve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get to business here tonight. Any amendments to the agenda? Is this an amendment or not? No, I think that's just an addition. Okay, move on to the presentation. We have Jake Beaker, Fire Captain, to present about Mobile Santa.
Mayor, council, people out there in TV land, my name is Jake Beaker. It's my honor tonight to represent your Coeur d'Alene Firefighters Union, Local Number 710, and do a brief presentation about our upcoming Mobile Santa food drive. And if I could get the video to roll, please. Mobile Santa is a food drive that your firefighters have been doing for the last probably 10 to 15 years. What we do is we take a fire truck and Santa Claus and we drive around the different neighborhoods of Coeur d'Alene. You can see on the screen there, in the upper left, is a 1947 Buffalo fire engine. That fire engine served the city of Coeur d'Alene from the years '47 through 1978. The Firefighters Union had the opportunity to purchase it three or four years ago, and we thought it was a great opportunity, so we purchased that fire engine. During our fire, during our food drive, we decorate the fire engines with over 4,000 lights. We put Santa Claus on top, and we drive around the neighborhoods of Coeur d'Alene over the course of five nights, collecting food for the local food bank, cash for the food bank, and handing out candy canes to the kids and spreading some holiday cheer. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, a couple of years ago, our computer geniuses in the IT department helped us out and came out with something that we're really proud of. It's called Santa Tracker. It's difficult for people to know where we're out throughout the city, so if you log on to the Santa Tracker, you can follow up-to-the-minute updates of where he's at throughout the city. You can do this by going to the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department website and clicking on the link that says Santa Tracker, and you can follow him all throughout your neighborhood. We do this over the course of five nights, starting December 19th and going through December 23rd. On December 19th, we do the neighborhoods in Coeur d'Alene, which are south of Appleway Avenue and west of 7th Street. On December 20th, we do the neighborhoods that are east of 7th Street and south of Appleway. On December 21st, we do the neighborhoods that are north of Appleway and east of 95. On December 22nd, we do the neighborhoods west of 95 and between Appleway Avenue and Dalton Avenue. And on the last night, December 23rd, we do the neighborhoods west of 95 and north of Dalton Avenue. Every year, we have over 200 volunteer man-hours that go into pulling off this event. Last year, we had the best year that we've ever had. We were able to raise over 2,000 pounds of food, over $4,000, or sorry, $400 of cash to give to the food bank, and we handed out thousands and thousands of candy canes. So, if anybody is wondering when Santa Claus is going to be in your neighborhood, you can check the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department website. You can click on the Santa Tracker to track him down. We sent out the first heads-up on our Coeur d'Alene Fire Department Facebook page, and that post was seen by over 1,200 people. So, we think the building, or the program is building over the years, and we're really excited about it. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment.
Send me.
I just want to say thank you. I know that you personally put a lot of time into getting the fire truck ready, and I had the honor of getting to ride along a couple hours last year with Santa, and you really do brighten the season and brighten the kids' lives in Coeur d'Alene, so it's really a gift to the city, so thank you.
Any other questions for Jake? Thank you, Mayor, very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
We will move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on matters that relate to city government will have three minutes to do so. Anyone wishing to come forward with a city comment at this time?
Good evening, council. Tina Konachigi, I live in Coeur d'Alene. Idaho Statute 5301 states cities governed by the Act shall exercise all powers as are not specifically prohibited by or in conflict with the general laws or the Constitution of the state of Idaho. Coeur d'Alene City Ordinance 9.52 in its entirety violates not only Idaho statutes, but also the U.S. Constitution, the Idaho Constitution, and the U.S. Codes. The city's attorney, Mike Gridley, stated to the Coeur d'Alene press that the amendment to the Ordinance 9.52 will remove the word firearm from the language of the regulation. The remaining ordinance with the amendment applied will still be in conflict with the general laws and Constitution of the state of Idaho. Idaho Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, states the inalienable rights of man, among which are defending life and liberty, protecting property, and securing their own safety. The city's definition of weapons will still remain. What if someone doesn't wish to carry a firearm, but only a knife in defense of his person? Or a baseball bat, or a walking stick, et cetera? The Idaho Constitution does not state how or by what means an individual can secure their own safety. The city of Coeur d'Alene would also be in violation of 18 USC 241 and 242 for conspiring to oppress or intimidate any person in the free exercise of their right to secure their own safety, a right and privilege secured to them by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, and intimidating such a person with a charge of violating an ordinance and a hefty fine because they choose to exercise their right to carry on their person a weapon as defined in your ordinance. I want to remind the city council that these issues concerning the citizens' rights will not be taken lightly. The city's attorney needs to thoroughly examine all laws and rights that their citizens have guaranteed to them before haphazardly passing ordinances that leave the city open for legal challenges to those illegal ordinances. The city council and attorneys have more than once told the public that they need to challenge these ordinances in court. I challenge the city council and their attorneys to second-guess the recommendation to the public, because the city will not find themselves in district court with a challenge to their ordinances, but in federal court, and that will cost much more than $2,500. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Konachigi, Coeur d'Alene. The city council relies heavily upon proper legal advice, so much so that legal has its own table and mics. When one requests guidance from legal, one would expect replies to sound something like, in Idaho v. Orwell, 1984, the court ruled, or Idaho Code already defines that as, or possibly Idaho and U.S. Constitution prohibit such actions from the city council. Yet, I'm all too often stunned by Gridley and Company's replies for requests for guidance, such as, "I don't know." "I haven't checked into that the way I read it." We should be paying for guidance to court rulings, case history, proper use of definitions and wordings in contracts, and the all-important constitutional question, not for "I don't knows." Please allow me to give you a short vocabulary lesson. Misfeasance. Now, I might be slightly wrong on the wording on this, but I believe it's defined as advising the city council to run roughshod over people's rights in defiance to state statutes, U.S. Code, Idaho Constitution, the U.S. Constitution, then advising that it will cost about $2,500 in district court to defend. The city council should lower its liabilities when it requests advice and guidance from legal, not increasing or compounding those liabilities for someone that might want to have 15 minutes of fame. With all that said, I'd like to personally request Mike Gridley's and Company's resignation. The city council relies heavily on legal staff-
You know, I'm going to stop, I'm going to kind of stop you there for a minute. I don't want you to directly call out any city employees. If you want to talk about the legal department, if you want to talk about any department, you can certainly do that, but I don't want you to call out any single city employee.
They're running roughshod over our rights?
If you want to say legal department, that's fine, but I don't want you to comment on any-
I'd like the legal department in.
Okay, there you go.
This city council relies heavily on legal staff to give proper legal advice. In my opinion, the city council needs to examine its contracts with legal staff and seek to replace with good counsel ones that own and regularly uses constitutional spectacles to examine the proposed actions, resolutions, and ordinances from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Heinrichsen, Coeur d'Alene. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'll be very brief. After numerous conversations with law enforcement, it's been pretty much deduced that they don't have the teeth and the legislation, the ordinances, to be able to maintain neighborhood peace and character. On two occasions spanning two years, there's a property on North 9th, just south of the freeway, that is in dire need of beautification, to say the least. The property is at 1935 North 9th. There's three lots there. The house is not to code. I've been in the crawl space that has a very poor egress, or access to it, very poor steps. If your lights went out, power went out, you'd probably need an ambulance to get out of the thing, and it's a block wall partially held up by tree trunks. And this is Coeur d'Alene. My concern is this, simply, there's got to be some kind of an ordinance, a cease and desist, that an officer can come to the property and post, red-tag it, if you will, and say, "You've got this long." Whether it's three days, whether it's a week, whatever, you've got that long, we'll be back here. If it isn't cleaned up, you're going to have a citation, you're going to be going before the judge, and you will pay a good penalty, and that cease and desist will become far more. We've had a number of issues at Spruce Avenue Neighborhood Watch, and they go on for months, sometimes years, with one family, and there's no resolution. The police can't go in there and do anything because they don't have a compelling interest or whatever it is. They can't go in and knock on the door, but they could turn around and say, "This property is a blight. Let's get it cleaned up. You've got a week." Unless that is the intent for this city council to blight the southeast part of Coeur d'Alene intentionally. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dennis, did you call code enforcement? What happened?
It was about a week ago. I haven't heard anything back. My phone number was there. I will take pictures, and I will do it formally so that there is a public record on it, on this. Before, when I did it, got nowhere, and we ended up bailing a woman that was in need of housing. We had put her in the house, we cleaned up the property.
Who's we?
Tim Klug, as well as myself, and then we had two of his friends helping us. We went through and knocked down the weeds, took trailer loads out of there. If you drive by 1935 North 9th, you'll see what I mean. I would also say that an investigation should be made as to whether they have a home occupation license to be able to operate a junkyard, a salvage yard, in a residential neighborhood, and sell cordwood as well. They want to do subsistence, they can find a dirt road somewhere and take care of business. This is rented by, this is owned by Mike Galette, I believe. His brother or family member lives down in Florida. My understanding with working with property owners in my area is that Idaho doesn't have any kind of safeguard for people that are investing their property, or their finances in the state. I would say in North Idaho, in Coeur d'Alene, even if those laws did exist, they would be hard to be applied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Drive by, 1935 North 9th.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment at this time? Okay, we will close the public comment portion of that. Move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Mayor, I'd moved to approval of the consent calendar, which includes Resolution 14053.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Renato, could you read the resolution items?
Certainly. That is approval and amendment of agreement with police captains, approval of a consultant labor services agreement with Ron H. Clark, and acceptance of a grant deed for litorial rights from Wayne and Nancy Nash.
Roll call, please.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Announcements, we have any announcements from the council tonight? Amy?
I have one. On Saturday, I had the honor of visiting the 38th Completed Habitat for Humanity House in our fine city, and it was a pleasure to welcome Sean Blankenship to his home and help celebrate the handing over of keys and his future occupancy there. So, it was a great moment for Coeur d'Alene and to celebrate his new home.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other announcements? I just had one announcement. On Saturday, we had the Fourth Annual Red Kettle Mayor's Challenge between Cootney County Mayor's and the Spokane Mayor. I was joined by Mayor Vic Holmes of Rathdrom, as well as Dick Jervlin of Fernan, and we had a great time. We've spent a couple hours there, and I'm proud to announce that the Cootney County and Cootney County Mayor's are now 4-0 during that time. The period from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., we raised over $21,000 to go towards the Salvation Army for the people in need in Cootney County, and as well, Fred Meyer added $5,000 to our total, so that day, we raised over $26,000. So, thank you to everyone that was involved in that. Okay, move on to other business. CB-14-1022 municipal code amendment to the Weapons Prohibited Chapter, and a staff report by Mike Gridley.
Good evening. This is an issue that has come before you before this year. A little bit of history, back around 2000, the city council at that time passed an ordinance prohibiting weapons, various weapons, including firearms at parades and public assemblies. I was not here at this time. Those of you who were, I think, remember that this came out of a time when there was a lot of activity by some extremist groups, specifically the Arians, and it was causing conflict in the community, confrontations, and a level of intimidation. I think the city council felt like this was appropriate to regulate firearms in a manner, or weapons in a manner, at parades and public assemblies. Fast forward to 2008, the Idaho Legislature adopted a state law that, on its face, purports to, or seems to say, that cities do not have the power to regulate the possession, transfer, ownership of firearms, and some other regulations. Recently, and I think this spring was when it came up, Councilman Adams was approached, I think, by some folks who were aware of our ordinance, and our ordinance, I would say, is probably unique to Coeur d'Alene, or probably are not other cities, or we're not aware of other cities, certainly in Idaho, that have an ordinance like this. Again, probably stems from the history and council doing what they thought was the best thing back during those times. It was brought to our attention that this current, that our ordinance may be in, not in compliance with state law as it currently exists. So, we did some research on that. There appeared to be two statutes, state statutes, that govern this area. One of them said cities have the right to pass ordinances and regulations to prevent disturbances and disruptions and things like that in the community. The other clearly said the city does not have the right to regulate firearms or weapons. So, the argument was, well, in order to prevent disturbances and things like that in the city, our previous council had chosen to enact this ordinance, and that was within our power. It came to council last summer, I think it was a 3-2 vote, to stay, stay the course, not change the ordinance. Subsequent to that time, we contacted the Attorney General, the Idaho Attorney General, who, while not a court, their opinions are not precedent. I think it's good guidance, obviously, of what the opinion of a court would be if they were asked to interpret our ordinance as compared to the existing, passed in 2008, state law that says we can't regulate this. So, the Attorney General analyzed it and came back and said, "Recognize the argument, two different statutes, but we believe the statute that says cities cannot regulate guns, firearms specifically, is the one that carries the day, or is the one that is, rules over the other statute." So, we're back here, having checked with the Attorney General, checked with this, and as I thought about this, I think one of the goals of the original ordinance, as I understand it, was to avoid confrontations and conflict in the community. And I think, right now, we live in a time where this issue regarding the firearms is an issue that may lead to conflict and confrontation if our ordinance stays the way it is, because I think if somebody is displaying a weapon or has a weapon in their possession, a police officer at a parade, a police officer comes up to them and talks to them, perhaps writes them a ticket under our, or attempts to write a ticket, under our existing ordinance, that could lead to a conflict, that could lead to a confrontation. So, I think there's, I'm here tonight proposing this amendment to remove firearms from our definition of weapon in this ordinance, and also making clear that state law allows the use of firearms within the city limits in self-defense, in lawful self-defense. One of the questions I've received is the practical effect of this. There still is, on the books, a law that's known as a brandishing law, basically, which means if you're carrying a firearm, legally carrying a firearm, you still can't threaten people, you can't use it in a way to, it talks about a rude or disrespectful manner, but you can't use it to intimidate people. So, that's a law that's still on the books that may come into a play if somebody doesn't use common sense in that, carrying a firearms. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. So, if you have any questions, be glad to answer.
Questions for Mike? Woody?
Just a couple. Mike, so this attorney's opinion, he's a deputy attorney, so is he high up enough to whatever he says goes?
Well, we addressed, excuse me, addressed our question to the Attorney General, the Idaho Attorney General Lawrence Wosden. He was here last week, Dan and I met with him. And then he gives it to, in this case, Brian Kane, who is the chief deputy, or the, he's actually the third in command. So, they don't put out an opinion that isn't endorsed by the Attorney General. So, even though he's not the Attorney General, he's an assistant, it's an opinion endorsed by the Attorney General's office.
So, it carries the same weight as if Lawrence has put his stamp on it?
Yep.
Give me an example of how that works for you and your attorneys. Can you?
An example of how that works, if I put my stamp on it?
Works here, it doesn't work there. So, Warren has to do something, and you're okay with it, and it comes from Warren?
You better do it.
Okay.
No, it-
Same idea, then?
It's, and I think most government agencies are that way. The Attorney General of the United States are on down, and so, if a question comes in, because they don't want a situation where one day, somebody gives one opinion, one attorney, and somebody else gives another opinion. So, their office will consult internally and decide what the position of that office is. You know, in our instance, when we're asked questions, we'll consult on it, and then we ultimately formulate an opinion for the city, you know, and that's what it is until there's other evidence or a law changes or a court case comes about that-
So, it's not Lawrence kicking it down the road? No?
No.
Okay, just checking. It seemed like if you'd ask him, it would seem like it's important, but not important enough for him, but one of his guys will take care of it. Is that okay?
Well, again, Councilmember Gookin and I met with him. He runs a multi-billion dollar, or multi-billion dollar state. He's the attorney. He's got 120 lawyers that work under his supervision. He's the elected Attorney General. To some extent, I'm the appointed chief legal officer of the city of Coeur d'Alene, and so, everything works under that.
Okay. So, the other question is, so when the state changes a law after an ordinance has already been passed, that trickles back down and everybody has to come up to par, is, they set the new par, so to speak?
Right. Right. So, cities are a creature of, are created by the legislature, by the state. The only right we have to exist as a municipal corporation is by state saying, "Yes, we can have cities, and they can do these things." In the absence of a regulation saying, "You can't do it," then typically, cities can do what they want to do, under the police power. We have the police power under our state statutes to regulate things like weapons and anything within our city limits that the state has said, has not said, "You can't do it." So, in this instance, in 2008, the Legislature decided to occupy that field, to take over that area of the law, and they passed a law saying, "Cities, counties, other entities, governmental entities, you cannot regulate the possession, transfer, ownership of firearms." But, and you say, "Well, why didn't you change it then?" It was never challenged. We had never had anybody bring it up as an issue. So- was never challenged. We had never had anybody bring it up as an issue. So, now it's been brought forward, and we're proposing to a change of-
So, my last question is, does our ordinance, the old one or the new one, does it infringe on our constitutional rights to bear arms?
No. Arms or firearms, and that's what we're excluding here. It does still continue to prohibit weapons as defined, and some of the weapons include a knife, bat, things like that. We have the absolute right to regulate that within our city limits. That does not bump into the Second Amendment. Although, let me say, there's a case I'm aware of that's going to the U.S. Supreme Court, dealing with tasers, and whether tasers can be regulated, because they might be considered arms under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. So, some of this evolves, and certainly, the Legislature can change laws that affect us. But, as it is right now, we absolutely have the power to regulate things like that, other than firearms.
Thanks. More questions? Kiki?
Mike, thanks. I just want to be clear that what we're talking about here is to amend this ordinance that deals specifically with parades and public assemblies.
That's correct.
So, we are also talking about the fact that within, if the ordinance were amended to exclude firearms, the brandishing of a firearm is still in effect for protection for citizens both watching and in the parade, in the parade ordinance. So, that's a city, that's a city law that covers all of the city and including the parade route. And then, it's kind of, I want to clear this part up. We have, that the city council may choose to add language that you said was already a state code. So, why would we choose to allow language for useful defense of firearms in the city limits to a parade ordinance?
Very good question. As a lot of our codes are, they're sort of put together over time. If you look at the section 9.52, it limits where firearms can be discharged, discharge prohibited, firearms are prohibited. Why that section is in there and not someplace, I don't know. But, the intent of this amendment would be to add lawful self-defense, use of a firearm as lawful self-defense, in this as an exception to the discharge of a weapon, firearm prohibited. In other words, basically, you're not allowed to fire a gun within the city limits, except for if you're Shooting Gallery Gun Club, law enforcement, or self-defense. Now, you could choose to leave that out. If somebody did use a gun in the lawful self-defense, they would be able to raise that at that time, if they were charged with, you know, discharging a gun in the city limits. It was just something we were asked to add in the exceptions. And again, why it is, this is parked under the, well, it's under weapons prohibited, but it's sort of under the parades and public assemblies section.
Any other questions?
I think I could elaborate on Kiki's question there. So, this was brought forth in part by the Idaho Second Amendment Alliance, who are going city by city, looking at their weapons ordinances. And this particular language that is actually, you know, a two-part thing, so that portion isn't really in conjunction with the weapons portion. So, they just view it as an additional safeguard for citizens' rights in a self-defense situation where they've used a gun. So, really that simple.
Steve, can I ask you, along those lines, I asked Mike if this ordinance infringes on our constitutional rights to bear arms, and he said, "No." And it sounds like you're saying, "That's not true," or-
No.
Well, as it is now, it does.
No, as it is now, it does. So, once it's-
And this new one does not?
Well, at least, I think, as it relates to firearms, now potentially, with the weapons language, knives are in there, and those are part of the concealed weapons ordinance. So, I think there's still the potential for conflict, as pointed out by the Kuna Shigis, but it's better. So, at least, from the Idaho Second Amendment Alliance's perspective, you know, their main focus was firearms, and so, it cleans that up. So-
And I think it, some of our predecessors felt that it didn't infringe on our right to bear arms, just our right to bear arms while we were watching a parade. So, I mean, that was part of the language from conversations years back.
Other questions?
Yeah. I think, Mike, you explained it very well. I think the thing is that, at the time that the council passed this, passed this ordinance, where there was some concerns about a group of people that lived north of Coeur d'Alene, and that, that's why this ordinance was presented and passed by the city council. I think that, although the Legislature has said that the ordinance is out of date and all this stuff, you know, I believe that at that time, that the ordinance did benefit the city and the citizens. It was, part of the concern was for the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. And I think that, like I say, at that time, it was a good thing, you know? I'm not saying that, right now, it's not a good thing. But, you know, and I don't always agree with the Legislature or the Attorney General, but, you know, if somebody has a mind to, they can go after the city. And I think that they would, with the opinion that we have now from the Attorney General's office, I think that they would probably win. And so, I think that the best thing that we can do, so that we can stay out of court, and not cost the taxpayers any money, is probably pass this amendment.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just a couple of things. Woody, to address your question, the right is to keep and bear arms. And historically speaking, arms included swords. So, in England, when the queen or king would grant you a coat of arms, it was your license to own a sword.
Cool.
So, that's where that came from. So, if you ever look up your coat of arms, that's what that came from. But, in this country, we grant everyone the right to keep and bear arms. And I agree with Steve. I think knife on there is pushing it a bit. But, you know what? It doesn't say swords in here. So, I think they're okay. And if that's what you want to do. But, anyway, I'm in favor of this. I took an oath to office to support the Constitution and the state of Idaho, and all the rules and regulations. And I think that's what this does, is bring the city in line with that, which is to support the people's rights. And one of those is to keep and bear arms. So, I'm good with this. And I'd like to make a motion, too, to pass the first reading of Council Bill 141022, which amends our parade ordinance to remove language specific to firearms, and also allows an exception for people lawfully discharging a firearm in defense of their person or property.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, just, in summary, I think really what this boils down to is the fact that Idaho Statute 3302-J does not allow cities to regulate the possession or carrying of firearms, period. Discharge is all. And so, I think that's the major impetus for this, and this will bring us in line with state statute by amending our code.
Amy?
Well, this is an ordinance that I think we've all thought a lot about over the last several months, and visited with the previous council, and our previous mayor, and seeked their perspective. You know, what were you thinking when this came before you in 2003? And it was a different time here. We did have extremist groups that were carrying firearms in parades in our community. As was just stated, in 2008, the Legislature passed 183302-J, too, that prohibits us from regulating firearms. While I think this ordinance has served our city well, and I would have, at the time, supported it if I was on council in 2003, I do greatly respect Idaho's Attorney General and our city. I have a great amount of respect for our community, and therefore, tonight, I will be voting to amend this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Woody?
You know, this is another one. I wasn't here when you guys did the last three to two. I was somewhere tropical and warm, as I recall. When I first heard that, I thought, "What's wrong with what we've done? We've asked people to be civil and not create strange feelings for people when they're out at a parade." I agree with Amy. The original passage of this ordinance goes beyond, before 2003. A lot of us were here. A lot of us were part of the community in close when all that was going down. It seemed like the natural thing to do. And Ron, you kind of hit the, and I know it's hard for you to do this, and I respect that a lot. And it helps me make the right choice, to support you in making this, as much as this seems so silly. And you would hope, I would hope anyway, that if we go forward this, there's some common sense out there with people carrying guns in the right places, you know? I have nothing against carrying guns, but parades and kids, and it seems inappropriate. But, appropriateness, obviously, is whatever the law will do. So, I'm going to support this.
Any further discussion? Renata, could you read the title, please?
Certainly. Council Bill 14-1022, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, amending section 9.52.010 to remove firearms from the definition of weapon, and amending section 9.52.030 to add the exception for persons discharging a firearm in the lawful defense of person property, providing repeal and conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing the publication of a summary, and providing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Can I abstain? No?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and adopt Council Bill 141022 by having read one, by having one reading of the title only.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Renata?
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, before we move off this topic, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to come back to council and discuss the implications of dropping the weapons definition from this same code.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second?
And, Mr. Mayor, this is not a motion to remove this section at this time. This would involve input from our police department and from staff on what the implications would be if this were to be removed, and I would simply want to have that information for council to make a decision.
Okay. Any further discussion from any of the council members?
I'm not following this. Excuse me.
Certainly.
Help me out here.
Okay, so, Woody, the definition of weapon in this code is a bit broad, talking about other things that theoretically could be covered under the Second Amendment, as well as items like slingshots, a stick. I mean, I think someone was actually arrested by the city for holding a stick that had a sign on it protesting the Arians. And so, what I'd like to do is have staff come back to us and explain, if this is relevant, is this enforceable, what's the advantage to it, what's the disadvantage to it, and then we can make a decision at that time.
Steve?
Woody, part of that is air guns are in there as well. And I know kids all over my neighborhood go out, and they have these, you know, pellet gun, or not pellet, they're airsoft, these airsoft wars. You know, they gear all up with the, they have the vests and the goggles, and, you know, these airsoft pellets couldn't, you know, harm a mosquito, you know? But, right now-
I want to hear from the mosquitoes first.
They're discharging, you know, air guns, and they could, as it stands right now, they can be ticketed for that, so-
So, it seems like this could go on and on, a stick, you know?
Well, not if that section was removed, so.
Yeah, but we are the government. We can, we don't have to do this, dude.
Isn't this parades? He's talking neighborhoods.
Yeah, this would just be for parades, Steve.
Oh, just for parades? Okay.
This wouldn't be banning the, I think they are banned, so. Anyway, but that was the idea, was because it'd come up, I mean, Tina had mentioned it in her comments, and I know other people have mentioned, too. And I've talked to staff about it as well, as how kind of exhaustive this whole clause is here defining weapons. And honestly, I want to, I'd like to hear from staff, basically, is it enforceable? Are we enforcing it? What are the implications of it? And, because I know sometimes, there are things, I mean, I don't think like a police officer. We pay the chief to think like a police officer, and maybe he can come back to us and say, "Hey, here's some really good reasons why we want to do this." So, it's, now's not the time to do it. Now's not the time to discuss the merits of it, but hopefully, we can get some more information on this and make a decision.
Any further discussion from council?
Just for the record, sir, none of my kids have participated in any of the airsoft wars. It's the neighbor kids.
The other kids, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, if I get this correctly, Dan, what you would like to do is to direct staff to take a look at the weapons language in that ordinance and come back to council with it.
Right, and give us some advice, if it's still good to have, or whether it's something that they don't think is no longer necessary, or enforceable.
So, Renata, would you want a roll call on this, or a voice?
You don't need to do a roll call, but if that's easier, we can.
Yeah, I think we'll do. So, roll call, please.
Okay. Eddinger?
I'm sure glad you're first.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Okay. That's all you get.
Thank you.
Can we let this go now?
Yeah. And we'll move on to Resolution Number 14-054, amendments to the pay and classification system to include the new classifications for city administrator, pay grade 21, and lead traffic technician, electrician, pay 11. Staff report by Human Resource Director Melissa Tosi.
Good evening. I have recently posted two new classifications to update our classification and compensation plan. The first one being our city administrator position. In the past, this has always been a contract position, so we had the job description that had already existed, reviewed and leveled by BDPA, to get that position integrated into our current pay structure that all of our other employees are on. That recommendation came back at a pay grade 21. The second classification is a new position, lead traffic technician, electrician. This is a newly created position based on the work needs in our street department. We created that job description, had that leveled. The recommendation came back at a pay grade 11. So, authorizing these amendments will just basically update our classification and compensation plan.
Questions for Melissa on this? Okay, looking to get a motion on this?
Sure. I'll move to approve Resolution 14054, which approves amendments to the pay and classification system to include new classifications for the city administrator, pay grade 21, and lead traffic technician, electrician, pay grade 11.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata?
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. We're on to CB-14-1023, vacation of a portion of Mill Avenue and Government Road, rights of ways situated west of Northwest Boulevard.
Portion of Mill River, Government Road Right-of-Way Situated in the Northwest Boulevard.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is, and a second. Any further discussion? Renata, read the title, please, if you would.
Council Bill Number 14-1023, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Portion of Mill Street Right-of-Way from the East La Crosse Addition Subdivision, Recorded in Book B of Platts, Page 19, Records of Cootney County, Idaho, and a Portion of Government Road Right-of-Way from the Fort Sherman Abandoned Military Reserve, Recorded in Book B of Platts, Page 153A, Situated in Section 11, Township 50 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian, Records of Cootney County, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Generally Described as the Westerly 227 Feet of Mill Street and the Easterly 30 Feet of Government Road Adjoining the Westerly End of Mill Street, Repealing All Ordnances and Parts of Ordnances in Conflict Herewith, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of this Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof.
Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
We will move on to Resolution Number 14-055, which is a supplement to the BNSF Railway Real Estate Purchase Agreement, and Mike Gridley has a staff report for us.
Thank you. So, going back briefly, as you know, this is property that the city is under contract to purchase from BNSF Railroad. This is the Riverstone area, so the property runs from approximately here, the southern end of Riverstone, that's the pink, to the western edge of Coeur d'Alene at Hutter Road. The purchase and sale agreement was approved by the city on November 8th, I believe, and submitted to the railroad. The railroad at that time had said they wanted to do some soil sampling out there to make sure that the soil was not contaminated, since some of this property might be used for residential purposes, and certainly, it's going to be used for public use. So they did some soil samples, and it came back with some tests, and they did testing every thousand feet along the corridor. There were some of the results that had arsenic above a level that is the ID-EQ and EPA standards. We've run into that before. You probably remember, every once in a while, the water department will drill a well and run into arsenic. We live in a, in a part of the world that has metals and other things in the soil, that's why they do mining here, but, so arsenic is one of the things. There are other metals that were found out there, but that was a significant one. So we've talked to DEQ, been out there with them, and we're going to do some further testing. But what we're here tonight looking at, the railroad gave us this supplement, and the intent, I think, was for them to, or for us to acknowledge that they have done testing, and it's not a complete and absolute final test, but that we got the results. And then also to give us additional time to do our own investigation, if we want to, to extend the closing date into, I believe it's March, first part of March. So it doesn't affect our rights. We can still, if we, for whatever reason, decide we don't want to buy this, if we go out and do additional testing or surveying and decide this is not something we want to deal with, or if we decide there's going to be a cost associated with it, and so we want to revisit that. So it still keeps us in the same position, gives us some more time, but it acknowledges that we have received some testing results from BNSF Railroad.
Questions for Mike?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Gridley, how typical is this of when we buy a piece of property that we find this kind of stuff? And what happens next?
You know, I think the response is, how typical is it for us to test for this? Typically, that's not done. A lot of the standards, I was talking to, you know, one of the great things about being a lawyer, you get to try and become an expert on all kinds of different things. So now I'm becoming an environmental expert, talking to DEQ and our wastewater folks, people who have dealt with some of the environmental rules. A lot of the regulations and standards are for drinking water. So, you know, if you're drinking water and it's got a lot of arsenic in it, that's probably not a good thing. If what's found is, as they say, bound up in the soils and at a level that it's just kind of background, what they call it, then it's pretty common. Again, this area is known for its minerals. It's not like the Silver Valley kind of thing, where the hauling of lead and other heavy metals from the mines have contaminated an area.
So when they did the test, they dug a hole?
They went 18 to 24 inches down and took samples.
And was there anything, I mean, if we have this thing, what's the consequences that we need to pay to clean it up in the future?
Well, consequences of paying is it costs you money, but, so the thing, but in talking to people, there are various options, and talking to DEQ. So I went out there Friday with a representative from DEQ. One of the things that's commonly done when property is developed, you know, the property is scraped, the surface is removed for, to do footings or basements or other structures, that soil's pushed off to the side, they bring in other material, and then ultimately, it's put under a parking lot or other type thing. I mean, this isn't the type of thing that you would have to haul it off and, you know, bury it in a landfill or something like that, so. Right now, it's an awareness. DEQ said, well, we recommend that you hire your own person to walk the property and look and see if there's any evidence of spills, discoloration, or anything else. So from what we know now, it's not something that would be a big expense for us or any future owner to deal with, but we're going to take a look at it, so we're sure.
In addition to arsenic, what else was there that they found?
There was finding of mercury that is above the DEQ level, but it's below an EPA level. Again, some of this is for water. You know, they detected, they detected levels, but there was nothing else that was in, above The things that they were looking for are mercury, arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, lead, selenium, silver, and then there's things like benzopyrene, benzo, perylene, and a couple of things that I can't really pronounce, which were not found at a significant level, so.
How come they couldn't find any silver? That would have been cool.
Well, they found trace amounts of silver.
Oh, okay. All right. But they never come find the cool stuff. They always find the bad stuff. Reads like a bottle of shampoo.
Or salad dressing.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
So, real quick, Mike, so did DEQ or, did they tell you that asphalt as a sealant is a remediation? So potentially, a trail were going to be built there, and that would solve securing soils, then that was a remediation act?
Yes, and that's frequently what's done, but, and I don't want to raise a panic level or anything else. This is something, they went out, did some samples, it's not unusual to find these kind of things. We went out in our backyard, you might find the same stuff. It's just, we want to make sure that it is, you know, nothing to be worried about. So DEQ didn't say, oh my God, we're coming out, we're going to watch this, we're going to keep track of it. They said, if you need some help, talk to us, but they would suggest, you know, doing a further walk around to see if there's other sites other than what were sampled that looked suspicious.
Any other questions for Mike? We're looking for a motion here.
I move for approval of Resolution Number 14-055, Supplement to BNSF Railway Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to the public hearings. The first hearing that we have is a quasi-judicial hearing, ZC-4-14, Zone Change from C-17 to R-3 at 3201 Hutter Road. Does any council member have a conflict of interest on this that should be disclosed? None seen. We have a sign-up list of people wishing to testify. Okay. Thank you. And we will have a staff report by Tammy Stroud.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening, we do have a zone change request from C-17 PUD to R-3 PUD. It's a 1.247 acre parcel south of Hutter Road and lying between East Maplewood Avenue and West Mill River Court. The applicant is Ruin Jaeger and Associates, and the owner is R-Y-E-I-D-L-L-L-P. So this is an aerial photo of the subject property. This is Maplewood and Hutter Road, and this is the subject property, which again is a 1.247 acre parcel. The red line is indicating our current city limit line. And the city council must consider this request and make separate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice, and I'll go through each one of our four findings. That this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. The subject property is located here, and it does fall within the Spokane River District boundary. The staff report indicates that this is in the stable, established areas where the character of the neighborhood has largely been established and in general should be It also discuss in your staff report the Spokane River District tomorrow, and that this area is going through a multitude of changes, and the trend will continue for many years, and it continues. Finding B9 that the public facilities and utilities are or not available and adequate for the proposed use. Public utilities and facilities were reviewed by staff, and the comments are in your staff report on Pages 4 and 5. We did get comments from engineering, streets, water, wastewater, and fire, and overall, there were no issues with the proposed zone change request. There was an evaluation from the stormwater discussing that the drainage facilities previously being there, as well as the subject property is bordered by Mill River Court on the west and south sides, and Maplewood Avenue on the subject property's north boundary, and they are existing city streets and fully developed. But the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time, and the subject property will be graded to create building pads for future residential homes, and it's, there are no topography issues. And again, this is the subject property with the aerial photo. Finding B11 that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. And I did mention that the adjacent and connecting streets will accommodate the traffic movements generated from the R-3 zoning district and potentially for lots. As far as the land use, this is the subject property. It is a larger piece right now. There is an existing office building on the side, and they are in the process of splitting this off to create some residential lots, and that is why they've asked for the zone change to R-3 zoning. The yellow indicates the current zoning to the south and to the east, and they are also R-3 zoning, so it would be consistent as far as single-family homes, as far as the land use. And the current zoning is C-17 PUD, which is the commercial zoning district, and the R-3 zoning district, which is what the Mill River PUD is currently zoned. Neighborhood character from the 2007 Comprehensive Plan designates this again as a Spokane River District, and the characteristics are discussed in your staff report. The land uses in the area include single-family, mobile homes, commercial, manufacturing, and vacant land. And this request is part of and is consistent with the Mill River Master Plan Development, which is residential, multifamily, and a commercial development, and the proposed zone change would allow the R-3 zoning and the addition of four residential lots in the neighborhood. There are no recommended conditions for this request. So the city council must consider this request and make the appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice, and your finding worksheet is included in your packet. Any questions for me?
Questions for Tammy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, you said they're going to rezone it to R-3 PUD. I assume that's the same R-3 PUD that's to the south.
That is correct.
What is the PUD?
It was Mill River Planned Unit Development. I don't have the exact overall acreage.
Wasn't in our packet, so what were the, I mean, you do a PUD, there's special, like, goodies that they have.
They had some deviations on some height on certain homes, the Edgewater, single-family homes along the river, they had an increased height. They had some deviations or modifications to their required setbacks. They are not asking for any on this proposed single-family. They've also got the, some of the multifamily housing along Seltice Way that is also part of the overall PUD.
So that applies to this, too?
As far as...
Multifamily?
No, this is only going to be the portion that would allow for residential homes.
Okay. It'd be nice if that was in our packet.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Gookin on that. Can I assume that the Planning Commission asked a similar question, if that was all evaluated in their, their decision?
When the zone change came forward to the Planning Commission, they had asked for the modification of the planned unit development just for this portion and creation of a new subdivision and replat five lots and have the four additional residential lots. This is what the proposal looked like that the Planning Commission had seen. This is the existing commercial building, and in the zoning map that I had shown you, it included all of this into it, and they had split this off. So there was some discussion about the PUD, but because it didn't interfere or change the overall planned unit development and the approval only this section, that's why they didn't have all that information. They were only modifying, modifying this area of the planned unit development.
Any other questions for Tammy? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We will now open the public testimony portion. We have, the applicant has 10 minutes to present. We have an applicant here tonight.
My name is Doug Daras Rule, and I'm with Ruin Jaeger and Associates. We're representing the applicant.
Swear, you're in.
You swear the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Just like to acknowledge that our intent is to convert the existing C-17 commercial lot, carve off the bottom portion of it, and convert that to four residential lots to match the resident, the rest of the residential lots that are along there. All the improvements, as you can tell, are there from the existing roadways. Access will be provided from the existing road. It's pretty straightforward. It's town zone from C-17 to R-3, so I think without confusing you some more, I'll just stand for questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Do we have anyone that would be considered to be a primary opponent here? If they, if there is, they have some time to speak. Doesn't appear that there is. I do have on my list Cheryl Frazier. Cheryl did not know, is Cheryl here? Okay, she's not here. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Is there anyone else that wishes to testify?
My name is Jim Stafford, and I own a home in the Mill River Homeowners Association. And...
Renato will swear you in, please, for the hearing.
I'm sorry.
I'll need to swear you in first, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. Do you swear the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. My name again is Jim Stafford, and I own a home in the Mill River Homeowners Association, which all those homes except the proposed site are members of that homeowners association. And I just would like to understand what impact those four lots, since they won't be a part of the association, okay? And there is no control, the association does have control over the types of homes that are built there and, and rules and regulations and approval by a committee of the homeowners. And so I would like to make sure that those homes are consistent and follow the same rules as the people that have previously purchased homes in that residential area.
Mr. Stafford, if I could ask you to fill, Warren is tracking you with a piece of paper there. Tammy, were you going to address Mr. Stafford's question?
It was a condition that the homeowners for these proposed lots would be required to join in on the homeowner association.
Okay, so they would be a part of the homeowner association then?
Yes.
Okay.
What if I got Mr. Stafford come back and she just, our planner, Tammy, said that the new homes would be required to be members of your homeowners association? Was that your question?
Yes.
Okay.
But also, then it has to be approved by the homeowners association. So I think you would need to get this homeowners association approval prior to approve the subdivision.
I, I don't think that's within their jurisdiction, is it? I mean, I'd have to ask Warren, I guess, to see, does, does this development require approval from a homeowners association, or how does?
You're asking them to take it on, right?
Well, that's what I want to find out.
Well, have, have Warren give us a...
No problems.
Thank you.
Good evening. So your question is exactly?
So does the homeowners association have to, if I understand Mr. Stafford correctly, does the homeowners association need to approve this, or this has to be run by them? Or how, how does that interplay in this?
I don't know if I can answer that question directly because I haven't reviewed their CCNRs to know, and their declarations, to know whether or not this property is subject to those declarations. If they are, certainly they're going to be a member of the association, they're going to have to comply with all of the covenants placed on the property.
Okay, and just, Mr. Stafford, if I could ask you again, what is your concern? That's the, I mean, you have a concern about this. What is the concern regarding the homeowners association?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, it's one of these, follow the yellow brick road. So what I've heard is that these houses are going to comply with the CCNRs of Mill River Homeowners Association. Is that a requirement of, it wasn't clear to me that that's a requirement.
So I guess that would be my question to Mr. Wilson. Is that a requirement of our rezone here?
You know, I do not believe so. So it becomes, there are a couple of different issues going on. Typically, we will occasionally require the formation of a homeowners association to maintain common areas. So there's a master association that was required to be formed when this area was originally developed. I don't know whether this property is subject to that or not off the top of my head. I would guess that it is, but I don't know that because I've not reviewed the documents. The secondary piece of that is, I think that there's a little bit of confusion. This property is going to be subject to the rules of the planned unit development. In this instance, they could frankly have developed this product without going through the zone change. The purpose for the zone change frankly is to get peace of mind for the neighbors that what they're getting is residential development, residential development rather than commercial development. They could have built the residential lots there, but in the future, someone could have come back and said, wait a minute, this makes sense to make this commercial. So that's why we're going through this process is to essentially make these four residential lots consistent with that around them. So the same city rules are going to apply to this property as the neighbors have to comply with. I can't speak to the CCNRs. I suspect that they are subject to the CCNRs, but that's not a level of city enforcement. We require the formation of the association, but we do not enforce the individual requirements. So if it's subject to the CCNRs, they're going to have to go through the homeowners association review and approval process for the architectural controls.
Just hypothetically speaking, if we, if we're working with an annexation or a zone change, and it's within an area that's covered by a CCNR, who, whose responsibility is it to make sure that the new property is in accordance with the CCNRs?
The owners association.
The homeowners association itself? And at what point do they step in? Do they step in like now, or do they step in during architecture?
It becomes a completely different process. Their process essentially is it gives them a right to go to court and enforce their, their covenants that are placed on the property.
Okay.
So they can come here and speak to it, but we really have no role in that process. We don't play any enforcement role in CCNRs.
So if this is, so if I understand this right, this is coming in and it's going to be covered by the CCNRs? So Mr. Stafford is saying no?
I suspect that that's the case, but I haven't read the CCNRs and was this developed, twelve years ago, eleven years ago? That's probably the last time I looked at their CCNRs.
Do you have something to say?
Steve?
Well, Tammy said that part of the agreement was that they become a part of the HOA.
Okay.
So if they're part of the HOA, then they have to adhere to...
Yeah, that's, like you said, that's my assumption. Without having read the documents, I don't know that, but that's my assumption.
Which again, give them the civil process, right?
Correct.
Tammy, did you have something to add to that, or just to reiterate the point on the homeowners association again, if you could?
Yep. And I was just going to reiterate, during the planning commission meeting, one of the conditions and one of the discussion items that was brought up from one of the planning commission members was that they possibly become part of the homeowner association. And the applicant had also mentioned that they may create their own or join in on the other. As Warren said, don't know that that's, you know, I don't know enough about their CCNRs, but that was one of the conditions that was proposed.
So it's proposed, it's not enforced?
So, yeah, if there was a condition that was imposed at the last level on the PUD amendment, that would be required. So at the time they come in for building permit issuance, we would look to see whether they've either joined the existing owners association or created their own.
And that's why we should see the PUD?
And I will disagree with you because that level of inquiry isn't appropriate for a zoning decision. The decision on zoning is, does it comply with your comprehensive plan essentially? And is it, can you meet the findings? And so those are the things that we present to you because that's the stuff state law tells us is appropriate for this type of decision.
Warren, I have one question if I could. So there are no conditions on this?
Yeah, typically not. I mean, we typically, you'll occasionally see conditions on a zone change, but typically not.
So do you think that we need to put a condition on this about not only joining the HOA, but adhering to the CCRs? Or is that not really?
There's already a condition for the PUD that says the creation of owners association required to ensure perpetual maintenance of the common open space. So we already require that, that's already done. I don't know that we're in a position to force an existing homeowners association to admit this property if they don't want to. So the best we can do is say, you got to create your own or join the existing one.
Thanks.
Mr. Stafford, I don't believe we answered your question.
But we tried.
We tried.
Yeah, well, it just seems that, you know, that part of your duties as council members is to ensure that the community remains consistent. My only concern is, so they go form their own homeowners association, they form their own rules, and they may or may not comply with the, with the look, feel, and fit of the community that already exists there. And that's my concern, is that when those lots are developed, there's houses right next door to the subject property that are very nice houses that had to comply with certain rules and regulations when they were built. And I don't see why we can't make, or make it a part of the deal, that that piece of property follow the same rules so we have the same fit and function. And this makes sense to me.
So if I, if I follow this, the, those houses that were developed right next to the subject property were subject to the PUD, correct? And whatever was in that PUD, they were built according to those guidelines?
That's correct. So the, the rest of the structures there were built in compliance with the existing PUD requirements for that area.
And this subject property would be subject to that same PUD?
Correct.
So?
So as far as setbacks, heights, all of those types of things, all of those are driven by our PUD requirements.
Right. So those would be consistent?
That's correct.
Yes.
And I believe your applicant probably has a bit of rebuttal time. He may be able to shed light on what his plans are going forward, whether he's going to form his own owners association or seek to join the existing one.
Okay.
Is, with the PUD, that's a requirement though, right?
Yes, they have to have one or the other.
Okay. I think Mr. Stafford wants them to have the other.
Well, absolutely, yes.
Kiki, did you have...
I have one question of Warren, please. Just to refresh my memory, on a C seventeen, what types of properties could have been built on that property if it was to remain a C seventeen within this PUD?
That is our broadest commercial district. It allows the most, or the widest range of uses in the city. It could be every type of retail, every type of service use is allowed. You could get seventeen units per acre in a multifamily development. You could get, oh, gosh, it pretty much runs the gamut. Almost everything you could get in the city, you can get there, with the exception of some industrial uses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public testimony?
Excuse me, could we have the owner of the property comment on?
Yeah, he will come up as a summation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public testimony? Okay. The applicant will have some time to sum this issue up.
It is our intent to reach out and join the existing HOA. We don't want to create our own homeowners association within the PUD. We have made contact with the president, and she's referred us to the management group, if you will. We have not actually met with them, but the, the direction is to move forward and do everything we can to join the existing HOA and, and comply with the existing PUD requirements.
Okay. Any, any further questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for passage of...
Wait just a sec here, Woody. I just need to officially close the public testimony. Renato gets a little cranky if I don't do that. So the public testimony is now closed, and now you can go ahead, Woody.
I forgot. Oh, I'd like to move for passage of ZC dash four dash one four, zone change for, from C seventeen, can you believe it, to R three at thirty two oh one Hutter Road.
Second.
And move for, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
And move to have staff prepare the findings. Sorry.
Motion and a second.
I was taking a breath there.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Renato.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Motion carry. Now we will move on to a legislative hearing. This is Legislative A dash one dash one four, Administrative Appeal, Interpretation of Municipal Code Section seventeen dot zero seven dot one zero two zero B one, Pocket Housing Access from Alleyway. And the appeal is by Miller Stafford Properties, Inc.
Good evening. This is a bit different than the items we typically hear. This is, I think, the second time I've done this in twelve years, so this is probably the first time that you've done, or most of you have done this. Our city code allows a process where if staff have interpreted a code one way, that, that a person who's aggrieved by that decision can request an appeal to the city council and review the staff's determination on what a code means. So in this instance, the staff received a building permit application wherein, it's a pocket housing development, and it's, you can see here on the screen, and I'll scroll down a bit to give you a different view here. So it sits on Sixth Street and Wallace Avenue. It's essentially four units, and with parking for the northern units accessing off of an alley, for the two southerly units accessing off of Wallace Avenue. Maybe you can see that documented here a bit better. This is actually too big. Let me shrink the screen maybe. I'll give you the idea. So the northerly two lots are coming off of the alley, south lots are coming off of Wallace. Our city code has a requirement for pocket housing developments, that if there's a, if there's an alley present, that the parking for the development needs to access off of the alley. So here, what you have is half of the development accessing off of the alley, half of it accessing off of a public street. So staff essentially informed the applicant that this, that the proposal doesn't meet with our city code, and they've asked to appeal that. So that's what we're doing here tonight. I've included in your staff report a copy of our pocket residential standards. The standard that's at issue is, flip to it here, it is in seventeen oh seven one zero two zero B one. And the standard says, to ensure that parking is as unobtrusive as possible, the following standards must be met. Alley access, if the development abuts an alley, parking must be accessed from the alleyway. So that's, that's the rub that we have tonight. Our, the staff's interpretation is that when it says the development must access the site, the reference is to the entire development, not a portion of the development. So you have the authority to review this matter. I've included also for you our standards for administrative reviews. The council is given the authority in the city code to review not just the wording of the ordinance, but also the intents, intent behind it, and listen to what the applicant has to say and see where they're coming from, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Woody?
Warren, how many pocket housing projects have we done?
A number. I couldn't give you that number off the top of my head, but there's been any number, there's multiple of them.
And they've all worked with this off the alley parking?
It's all, it's all a little bit different. Each one is different. They all look a little bit different than others. Some are on alleys, some are not.
Okay. On this particular, it went away, on that idea, what, what is it that staff is, is finding difficult with that? Is it because the alley doesn't go through?
Essentially, so the way this is structured, you have a garage here for the two inner, inner units, back to back garages. And so what our code would require is that, that your access come off of the alley here and all the way through the property to get access to this site.
So do you think those garages, what, to access them or to get out of them, they would back out all the way to the street? Is that the issue?
You know, that would be really up for the designer to sort out how they did that. You could do it any number of ways. Here, to be honest with you, I don't know that anybody from the city thinks that this is a bad product or a bad looking project. It makes some sense. It's just, in this case, our rule doesn't allow for it.
Okay.
Without, without some revision. And if, if council elected to revisit this after listening to the applicant and decide that, you know, we think that this fits in the intent of the code, we would likely be back to the planning commission relatively quickly, and then ultimately to you, an amendment adjusting how we handle this.
I seem to remember, I was around when we came into pocket, and, and I think the idea was to use pocket housing as infill, to kind of try and fill in the city instead of keep spreading out, is to try and kind of keep us downtown and in those lots that kind of became either empty or something happened. So each one, as you said, has been different.
Yeah, they're, all of them are a bit different than others. There's design standards that we try to apply across the board, but it's, any possible permutation can, can come up. It's largely based on what the, the real estate looks like, what the dirt looks like.
And if we change something like this, does that set precedent, does that mess you up down the road?
Like I said, I think if council's choice was to say, we think that this meets the intent of the code, and we think that when it says access, it applies just to those properties that, you know, not necessarily the full site, we would come back relatively quickly with an amendment to the code that would codify a way forward. I don't know what that would look like yet, but we would likely have something relatively quickly to our planning commission.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Warren, I just want to add on to what Woody was saying. So you're saying that all the other pocket housing developments done in the city where the development has abutted an alley, that the access is always from the alley?
That's what the rule requires. I don't know how many we've had that have but an alley, but that's what the rule, at least that's how we have interpreted the rule. Let me put it that way.
So if this wasn't an alley, if that yellow stripe up there wasn't an alley, if that was a street, this would be okie doke?
Yeah, it'd be straightforward.
So what was, what was the idea then? I mean, we're just trying to keep traffic off the street? Is that?
Yeah, essentially, you're looking at the, the purpose statement, to ensure the parking, the parking is unobtrusive as possible. So they're, I think they're thinking, this is a bit interesting because it's a corner lot. But if you were... But if you were, say, in mid-block where you've got access off of just one street, and you're trying to hide the parking back behind the building, to the extent that you can require the parking behind the building, it helps to essentially help it blend into the neighborhood, this is a different site than that. So, in some ways, this is, like I said, I think we think this is a decent product. It's just the rules.
Because if we didn't do this, then the guess would be that the parking could be all in front, so all of a sudden it looks like a parking lot with a row of houses behind it.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Yeah, I think that's the intent. And you go back to the purpose statements for pocket housing. I put some of this in the staff report. I'll quote it briefly. "The purpose of the regulations include encouraging greater efficiency of land use by allowing compact infill development, stimulating new housing that is compatible in scale and character with established residential neighborhoods, and ensuring the residents of such housing enjoy a high-quality environment." So, part of it is, we're trying to do, you know, sort of compact infill development. We're trying to do it thoughtfully so that it's not impinging on the neighbors.
What's there now?
And that's one of the reasons we want to hide the parking to the extent that we can.
What's this location now?
It's, I'll let the applicant speak to that. I believe it's vacant, but I'm not positive. I think it might be a parking lot.
Thank you.
If I could, Warren, I'll get the sign-up sheet.
There's, I think we've got nobody signed up. So, Dick Stoffer is here for the applicant. He's not signed up.
Dick, if you'd say to name and address, please?
Dick Stoffer with Miller Stoffer Architects. As of today, 2735 Fernand Hill Road. I'm willing to bet in Ron's whole tenure, you haven't downzoned from C-17 to R3 more than twice.
I'll be real quick, but give you just a little bit more background on why we're here. And
I think this is a situation where it's a relatively new ordinance, and you're continuing to see new ways that it might be applied. And so, what's happening is we're seeing things that weren't fully anticipated. And we think, as Warren said, it's a good project, and it's a good response to the ordinance. And I'll go through real quick. Your purpose for the pocket housing, encourage greater efficiency of land use, more units per lots. We're taking two essentially vacant lots and making them four fee simple lots. That is the existing subdivision. They are north-south 50 by 110 standard city lots behind the Social Security Building. What we're proposing is four 2,500-square-foot east and west lots, and thus, the conflict with not having alley frontage. The ordinance anticipates that these older subdivisions will have alley frontage on these typical subdivisions. When you break down the lots and go smaller, and there's a couple of reasons, which I'll get into, why we want them to go east and west, but then we lose frontage for two of our lots. Existing, someone asked the question, what is it? It's currently a parking lot. This is a view from Sixth Street looking east. The Social Security Building is supported by about 75 parking spots. It's vastly overparked right now. If we were to provide your parking ordinance, the parking on that lot, it would require about 30 spots. There's currently about 75. So, really, it serves as a nice support for the wedding chapel next door. They use it a lot. We see a lot of motorhomes parked there during the summertime. It is used as you see, but not really by the Social Security Building there. So, we're seeing that the pocket housing ordinance is an opportunity to introduce some housing, soften the neighborhood, chance to do a good development. Second purpose is to stimulate new housing that is compatible in scale and character to the established surrounding neighborhood. Existing neighborhood homes are small to midsize, 1940s, one and two stories, with rear-access garages. These would be smaller homes, 1,600 square foot, and by virtue of their small footprint, probably two-story with rear-access garages. This is an example of some of the architecture in the area that are kitty-corner across the street. That's the character of the neighborhood. Broader range of building forms for residential development. These are sloping sites, would allow step-up porches, similar to what you might see in a brownstone in an urban environment, but probably wood frame. Narrow lots, multi-story. These are initial architectural sketches of what the housing might look like. Expand opportunities for homeownership, and that involves smaller homes. There is a movement, and this is not just in Coeur d'Alene, but nationally, for downtown urban living, more of a walking environment, less emphasis on the automobile. Smaller lots, smaller footprints, lower price. Ensure the residents enjoy a high-quality environment with permanent stability and access to green space. Once again, these are downtown lots in a stable, established neighborhood. This is infill. This actually buffers the neighborhood from the existing commercial development in this area. Walking distance to downtown, just three blocks away, existing tree-lined streets. Design standards, this is where we run into our problem. And first of all, lot size, setbacks, open space, height, required parking are all being met by this proposed development. The only thing that is not being met is the access to the parking. And we think this is really just a result of running the lots parallel to the alley. Once again, north-south existing lots, proposed east-west lots, there's no longer that alley access on these. There's a little bit of a visual of how this would blend in with the Social Security Building and their existing parking. And you can see, by facing these towards Sixth Street, we take advantage of the mature trees. Those end up being nice front doors. They buffer the existing neighborhood. And really, the amount of circulation, we're looking at one curb cut off of Wallace Avenue serving two units, and then one off the alley serving the other two units. Any questions for us?
Any questions for Dick?
So, Dick, can you show me how cars come in and out of there?
Sure. If you look, where's my cursor? So, here's the alley, the east-west alley that runs past the Social Security Building. So, for this unit and this, and this unit here, oops, they will both access right here. And you need urban living. This is one of these deals where you need to get along with your neighbor. You've got an easement. You can't be leaving your rig out in front of his garage. And so, these two units have to get along, and these two units have to get along. They share a common driveway and access into their garages, but you have basically two off-street spaces that are independent of your driveway. So, this is one of those things that go with infill urban housing. You just, you have less, so there's really, for units, there's really a minimal amount of paving and driveway access. So, I think back to what Warren suggested, is that I think your staff believes this is in the spirit of the ordinance, and it's a good infill development, that their hands were tied in the way the ordinance is written.
So, you're not going to show me how the cars go in and out?
Maybe I'm not understanding your question, Woody.
Show me with your arrow how those cars come in and how they go out. Do those guys back out to the alley?
Yeah, right here. Yeah, all four of these cars will back into the alley, similar to the way everyone does out of their house that live, you know, that has their driveway off the street there. And then, these four will back out into Wallace Avenue.
Okay.
And once again, I think that's very typical of, you know, downtown situations.
That's how I get out of my house, backwards.
You could also back in, so you could go straight out. That's another, that's a second option.
Shake it up.
Relatively quiet streets.
Dan.
Mr. Stoffer, is that alley paved?
Yes, it is.
Oh, cool. Okay.
I'm glad I could say that.
Any other questions for Steve?
And so, Dick, in your report here, if this wasn't granted, you're saying you would rotate the whole development, or would need to, probably?
You know, Steve, there's, I'm not sure where we would go. We think this is the right way to do the development, and the homes really want to face that way. And if you said this, you know, the city wasn't interested in seeing it develop this way, I think we just reexamine the whole thing.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give any testimony on this? Okay. We will close the public testimony portion of that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Warren regarding our procedure here. So, Warren, we are, basically, you're asking us to more broadly interpret the code to allow this to happen? I mean, we're not judging this development. We're talking about the application of our code.
You're looking at the application of the code, the language from the Administrative Appeal statute. Let's see if I can flip to that quickly. It says, "The city council shall hold a public hearing. At its review of an administrative appeal, the council shall consider the purpose and intent, as well as the language of the pertinent provisions, shall affirm, modify, or reverse the determination of the staff." So, your options tonight would be to agree with staff that this would require all access off of the alley. You could overrule staff and say, we think in this instance that accessing half of the development off of the alley makes sense. You could do something else entirely. And again, in doing that, you're relying essentially on what's actually written in the code, as well as the purpose and intent of that code provision. And I've spoken to that a little bit, and Mr. Stoffer spoke to that as well, some of the purpose statements contained in our code.
So, what if we say, this is okay, what happens to the code?
So, we would continue to interpret the code consistent with your determination. As I said earlier, we would almost immediately go to planning commission with a way of codifying that, so it gets written into the code, so everyone knows how we're going to handle it.
Would that come back to us?
Yeah. Code amendments always come back to you.
Because what I'm, I'm okay with this, and I think it's logical. And, you know, to make this fit our code would be weird. So, well, you know.
All right, here you go.
But the thing is, I just don't want to see this being abused, and, you know, having a development that is against an alley, where you could have all the access against the alley, and have the developer come back, and all the parking's in front, and it looks ugly.
One of the things that we've kicked around as a way to deal with this, if that's council's decision, would be, we have in some of our other design review requirements, a design departure provision that essentially says, these are the rules. You have to follow the rules, but if you can build a better mousetrap, come show us how that works, and we can sign off on a different design solution. So, that might be one way that we would get to that, so that the general rule would remain the same, but in a given context like this, where you're backing up to an existing structure, where maybe it doesn't make the most sense to put the side yard next to the existing commercial space, if they can come up with a good design, we can sign off on that.
And this would, you guys would come up with that language, and it would go to planning, and then come to us?
Yeah, and we already have some of that language on the books in other areas of our code.
Okay.
And so, if that's where we went, and we'd staff this a bit and come up with what we think is the best solution, if that's where we went, it would be a matter of grafting that provision into a new spot in our code.
And this applies to all pocket housing, all this pocket housing that's allowed in our zones? I assume this is R12 or R8?
Probably R12 would be my guess. But, yeah, we allow it in most of our residential zones, and we have the design standards there, largely protect the surrounding users.
Okay. Thank you.
Warren, you used the word thoughtful, and that sort of grabbed me, because we don't get to use that word much around here. But, that was part of the pocket housing thing back in the day. I think that applies to this pretty closely, you know, that it gives you a little bit of flexibility. Each one's kind of unique. And you said we've done a lot of pocket housing. So, have we ever had to do this before?
Like I said, I've had one other administrative appeal. We have seen projects where, frankly, this is one of the nicer applications of pocket housing we've seen, to be honest with you. We've seen some that maybe weren't quite so thoughtful, but they meet all the requirements, and they get built, and they work. I mean, they serve a purpose. It's not unusual, I think, Dick alluded to this, it's not unusual that you draft code language broadly, because you're trying to anticipate all of the potential situations that could come up, and then somebody comes in and brings in something that sort of doesn't fit, but you still think makes sense. And so, how do you work with that? Here, we have a code provision that allows the council to look at the purpose and intent, as well as the code language, and say, this is what we think it means. So, thanks to that tool, we're here having this discussion now, rather than beginning the months-long process to amend a code.
Any other questions for Warren? Okay, so we are looking for a motion on this?
I don't have a question for Warren, but I have a question. Ed Wagner in the Building Department is in the back room, and I just wanted to ask him what basically his feelings are on this.
You want my feelings on this?
Yeah, I want your feelings on this. I want to know what you think about it.
Well, I don't regulate this at all, but personally, I would say that if it accesses the street, it could access the street, and if houses access the alley, it can access the alley. But our codes don't regulate anything, so I'd be on this particular topic.
Okay, thank you.
I think Ed should be here at all our legislative appeals.
Yeah, this once every three years is no fun.
The building code applies to this essentially in fire separation between the two structures, and then construction techniques, obviously, but that's the biggest rub when you're building something like this.
Woody.
I'd like to move for acceptance of this administrative appeal interpretation of the municipal code, pocket housing excess from alleyway by Miller Stoffer Properties, and mostly because it's thoughtful, and it creates good neighbors, because they live so close together.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the administrative appeal. Any further discussion on it?
I did not really want to make more work for you guys in planning, but I think this is a good, this is interesting. And I think just by opening up a little, and being thoughtful, and neighborly, we're there.
Yeah, I'm okay with giving you more work.
Roll call, please, Renata.
Steve had a question.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just had a comment. Warren used the term overrule, and it sounds so harsh. So, never want us to seem like we're overrulers. How about modifiers? Is that, okay, thumbs up on modifying.
Okay.
Everybody's got a question. So, wasn't part of this that, do we have to direct staff to modify this code and bring it back to us, or is that just part of the motion?
I think that's a second motion.
I don't think that's something you need to do. That's something we're going to do.
Okay.
Work.
So, we're not really modifying.
I like it.
So, you're interpreting it to allow these two lots to access off of the street for this development. That's the gist of your motion.
And then, what you're going to do is modify the language so that things like this in the future won't have to be appealed.
This discussion will bring you a code change that essentially codifies this approach moving forward.
And very quickly, too.
Pretty quickly.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
McEvers.
McEvers.
Oh, yes.
Wake up.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Hittinger?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'd like to move, Mr. Mayor, to immediately recess to a workshop with the city's legislative committee to review potential proposed legislation in the library community room at 702 Front Avenue, right here.
Second.
Motion and a second. Before we vote on this, I just wanted to say, today is our last council meeting of 2014, and it's hard to believe that it's been a year already. And I think we've had a good year. We've had some challenges. We got a lot of work done. I think that this is a great council, and I think that you guys did a great job for the city of Coeur d'Alene this year, and I'm very thankful for that. And I look forward to a great 2015, and I wanted to wish the council, and everyone here in the audience, and everyone at home, a Merry Christmas.
audience, and everyone at home, a Merry Christmas, and I look forward to 2015.
Here, here. So, we have a motion and a second to recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in recess to the workshop. Wait a minute.